Ladies and gentlemen, before we call the meeting back to order, if there's anybody who hasn't checked in when you were coming through, if there's anybody that hasn't checked in, could you go back and do that? Marlene asked that, she's waving her hand back there. Looks like everybody did, Marlene. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tom Daley. I'm your moderator. I missed opening the meeting an hour ago. We got opened and adjourned so that we could all have something to eat. So I'm going to recall the meeting back to order and ask if you would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. You've heard me say it before, we're really fortunate to be able to take part in our government the way that we do, our town government. And it seems that with what goes on in the national scene, Democrat, Republican, Independent, Socialist, whatever, all of that stuff aside, it's becoming more, it's becoming so important that we engage in this kind of activity as a community and as people that we come together at least once a year for the purposes of governing ourselves, for the purposes of hearing from our elected officials, both at the local and the state level, for the purpose of passing whatever articles are put in front of us. It's so important. I'd like to now ask you for a moment of silence. This year, I'd like to, I'd like to have it related to what's going on with the political situation in our country and so on and so forth. Again, no side-taking or anything like that, just that we're in an election year and it's important that everyone, no matter who they are or where they come from or what their viewpoints are, that everyone is afforded the opportunity to be heard from. And then put a little PS at the end of the moment of silence for what's going on with the coronavirus and hopefully that if it does get worse, it's not going to get a whole lot worse. Okay, thank you. After everybody ate, I know I might have been running the risk that if I had that moment of silence too long, silence too long, you might be falling asleep, so. But I got another solution that we'll come up with in just a moment to keep everybody awake. I'd like to start out with some introductions. Our Select Board, Tim Skoggins, he's our Chair, Tony Krulikowski, Art, you're the Vice Chair, correct? Art Whitman, Joe Barber, and Ken Harrington. Keep it on going, Dave Kiernan, our Town Administrator. Richard Bump, taking the minutes. Getting mixed up. Our Town Clerk in the back is Marlene Hall. And I want to recognize, each year, we name the folks that are our elected officials and who volunteer their time for the town. Our Treasurer, Melanie Dexter, our Zoning Administrator, Shelley Styles, the folks that serve on our Developmental Review Board, the DRB, Chair Tom Huntrek, and members Michael Day, Lama Clintock, and Chris Panassi, Planning Commission, Chair Chris Williams, and the members Mike Foley, Mike Chianowski, and Naomi Miller. Department of Public Works, our Highway Department, our Foreman, Mike Yanati, and his crew, Tim Gully, Ron Jennings, Eric Sanquist, Cody Wilkins, Dave Worthington. Our Fire Department, Chief Joe Vatican, and all his volunteers collectively, too many to mention, to name. Our State Rep, David Durfee, he's here, I saw him a moment ago. And what I'd like to ask you to do is, I haven't named the Listers, the Auditors, the Trustees, the Justices, or any of the appointees, or a lot of other committee members, I'm not, please don't be offended, everybody's in here, and if I was to try to read through all of them, you'd probably shoot me. So what I'd like to ask you to do is, please stand up and let's have a round of applause for all of the elected officials and volunteers that take care of our town. Great, thank you very much. Okay, some real quick, real quick housekeeping. Fire exits are at the front and at the back. If there are any non-voters, years and years and years ago, we used to take anybody who was not a registered voter in the town of Shasbury, and we used to segregate you over in the corner. We stopped doing that a couple decades ago, but it's always been with the agreement, the understanding that those of you who are non-registered voters, you know who you are, you can't talk, you can't vote, anything like that. And there are people sitting next to you who are registered voters, who have sharp elbows, who if they hear you saying anything or raising your hand, they're going to give you a jab. Also, for those of you with the elbow towards the non-voters, if the one on the other side is starting to fall asleep and snore a little bit, give them a jab, would you please? Okay. We'll talk about the articles, there's going to be a presentation by the Select Board. When we get to actually dealing with the articles, stating them, debating them, and voting on them, I will go over very briefly what the procedure is and the process so that you're able to comfortably address and speak on the articles. And when we get to that, if there's anybody that wants to say something or talk about something, please don't be shy because you don't understand what the processes and the procedures are. Please just say what's on your mind, and if you would like to put into a motion, I'll help you get it there. There's nothing more intimidating than thinking that there's some kinds of, you know, rule book in the sky that maybe you're going to say something or do something wrong. And a good example is, watch me, there'll be a lot of stumbling and such going on. Okay. Okay, David Durfee, could you come up here, please? David is our representative to the Legislature. David's up here for two reasons. And you can go in whatever order you would like to.
Thank you, Tom. And good evening, everyone. I'm sure others will take the opportunity as well, but I just wanted to say I thought the potluck was a great idea, thanks to everyone who contributed something, and if you got here, well, I don't know if anybody got here too late, there's probably food still there, but enjoy some if you haven't already. I'm going to just spend a couple of minutes updating you all on what's been happening this session in Montpelier, which started in early January, so it's been going on for about eight weeks. And I'll have to keep it short, I know. I'm happy to stay afterwards and answer questions, I'll take some questions here if there's time, and I'm happy to stay afterwards and answer more questions. I also, I got here a little bit late, so some of you may not have picked up the newsletter that I left at the back of the room, if you'd like one of those and haven't gotten one, there's some information there. It also has my contact information, so if you'd like to be, if you would like to be added to my email list, and I promise I only send out three or four emails during the session, so I won't inundate your inbox, but if you'd like to be on that list, just shoot me an email and I'll add you to it. This is the second year of a biennium, so we, I was elected a year and a half ago, went to Montpelier for the first time, January 2019, we finished in May, and then when we came back in January, we pretty much picked up right where we'd left off. So there was a lot of legislation that was already in the works, maybe that had come through from the Senate to the House where I am on the Healthcare Committee. There were two particular pieces of unfinished business that we started working on right away. One was the Paid Family Medical Leave Act, and the second was the Minimum Wage. And in both cases, the House and Senate, the two bodies, had to work out an agreement. We did that, and in both cases, the Governor vetoed the bills that we had passed. In the case of Minimum Wage, we, last week, we overrode that veto, so the Minimum Wage will be going up, starting January next year, and then again, January of 2022, to $12.55. Paid Family Leave was vetoed and that was not, that veto was sustained. So those are the two key things that we had picked up, left over from last year. We've had a busy session beyond that, and just over the past couple of weeks, we have, again, this is the House, hasn't necessarily gotten to the Senate, Global Warming Solutions Act, which sets goals, it takes the goals that have already been set, rather, and makes them enforceable. It also sets out a plan for how to get to those goals. And when I say goals, think the Paris Accord, which the United States had signed on to, and then we, under the current federal administration, had backed away from. We have passed legislation, just this past week, updating Act 250. It was a big, huge piece of legislation. I'm not going to go into detail now, although I will answer questions if you've got them. And I'll also note that we passed a bill that taxes and regulates cannabis. And in case you didn't know, last session, two years ago, the Legislature legalized the possession of marijuana and said, you're allowed to grow it, you can have it, but you can't buy it or sell it. So what the state is now working on is setting up a system that would regulate the sale and tax the sale of cannabis. And just quickly, two other things that may be coming down the pike. A major study that was delivered to the Education Committee, looking at the way pupils are counted in school districts across the state, which would have a big impact on our local schools if it were to be enacted, positive impact on the tax rate essentially. It won't be something that's done easily because anything that has a positive impact somewhere has a negative impact somewhere else. So there will be legislators who say, great, and there'll be others who say, hold off a little bit. It will be enacted over time, I imagine, and if it's not enacted quickly enough, there will probably be some sort of lawsuit to force it to happen. And this will have a big impact on our local tax rates when it eventually does happen, education property tax. The other thing that I'll just quickly mention is the healthcare workforce is an issue that we've been paying a lot of attention to in the committee I'm on. There are, there's a shortage of nurses all across the state, there's a shortage, a growing shortage of primary care providers, and we're trying to address it with the means that we have, which largely include helping people with their loans. Everybody has loans when they come out of medical school or nursing school, so helping them get through their studies and then not be saddled with so much debt when they're So that's Part One. Tom asked me to do two things. So the second thing is a little more formal, I'm going to read from a statement here, which somebody else prepared. I haven't read it through yet, but hopefully I won't stumble too much. Responsible leadership in our elected officials is not something that can be taken for granted in our modern, hyper-political world. However, the town of Shasbury has been fortunate to have had just such a leader, whose reputation not only has preceded her, but continues to be recognized even in retirement. We are speaking, of course, of Shasbury State Representative Retired Alice Miller, who will be recognized next month in Montpelier for exceptional service on behalf of higher education and the advancement of educational opportunity. The award is presented each year by the New England Board of Higher Education, which selects its choice of organizations, institutions, or individuals deserving of recognition for their innovative work in each state in New England. This year's recipient of the Vermont Excellent Award will be presented to Alice Miller at the Vermont State House on March 19th. In so doing, Representative Miller will join the ranks of former worryeys such as Senator Patrick Leahy, Senator Bernie Sanders, James Douglas, former governor, and James Jeffords, former U.S. Senator. This accolade is not only a well-deserved honor for Representative Miller, but it brings great pride to the town, she's so ably represented through her 30 years of public service. We wish to congratulate Alice for such recognition and are grateful for the leadership role she has been for the entire state.
Thank you, Dave.
What's next, Joe?
I think it's probably the Selectmen's Report next.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of the Shasbury Select Board, and I'm here to give the Select Board's report. First, I want to make sure that tonight, we recognize, if we didn't already, I don't remember hearing it, the people who organized the Potluck Supper, which I think was a great idea, and it looks by my unofficial count that it has brought some more people here, which is what the goal of it was. Leading that effort was Lon McClintock, Karen Mellinger, and Carl Corman, and if there's anybody else that was part of that corps, please let me know, but I think they deserve a round of applause. We're all kind of sleepy now, as we said, so I guess that's good. I'm going to turn this a little bit so I can see what I wrote earlier. Yeah, I just want to go through some of the accomplishments of the Select Board and the town in the last year. And, back up? There we are. Couple of big ones, we mentioned them last year, but they really completed this year in the early part of 2019, the Public Works Garage and the new transfer station were completed, those improved road operations and brought us a proper salt shed. If you've seen the salt shed out at the transfer station and compared it to the one next to Coal Hall, you can see that's, that was quite an improvement. And this transfer station works and looks better, so we're proud of those two things that we were able to bundle and get some needed updates there. Also, a significant update to the second floor at Coal Hall, a remodel that was completed this year. It looks beautiful, and that beauty was enhanced this year by a donation of artwork from Tom Fells of North Bendingson, Bennington. Frank Howard artwork by our own Shasbury artist, world-renowned Shasbury artist, was on loan for a while, and he has donated four of the five pieces that are hanging there now. And we're really proud of that, and there you can kind of get a sense, not a real good sense, but if you were in the old second floor of Coal Hall and you've been in the new one, it's startling, and it's really a place that we can be proud of, and so much more functional. We have actual, proper offices for the town officials, so we're really glad about that. And hats off to our Town Administrator, David Kiernan, who managed those two large construction projects at the same time and did a great job. And let me tell you, he was on that with every bit of the precision and detail of the engineers and architects that we hired to do it, and he was in daily conversation with them, and it was, it was really quite an accomplishment. So thank you, Dave. This year, we called upon, as we were every five years, and after this, it'll be every eight years, to rewrite our town plan. The Planning Commission did an exceptional job this year because the Select Board charged them with a major rewrite. We had looked at the Brattleboro Town Plan and the way it was organized, which was that the things that were called upon to do were listed at the front of each section, and then the background information about the town in those various categories came after that. So this was required, a complete rewrite, not the usual, update the population and the miles of road and rewrite the previous town plan. This was a complete redo, and it is a true working reference. This is something that the Select Board will be looking at for the next five years to see if we are doing what we have promised and what the Planning Commission has outlined for us to do. So thanks to the Commissioners there, Mike Chianowski, Mike Foley, Naomi Miller, Chair Chris Williams, and the Zoning Administrator, Shelley Styles, who did a tremendous amount of work along with us, including the final rewrite and edit was largely Shelley's work. And one other mention, the Southern Vermont Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy called SEDS. That was an economic initiative that came out of the Southern Zone Economic Report. That was a two-year process. That entity, that SEDS, was brought into being this last year, and that is something that we will hope will lend itself to increased economic activity in the area. The SEDS is a federal program, it outlines, it has the local communities, in this case, a two-county community, a two-county southern economic zone, Bennington and Wynden County, working together to define what we felt were our economic goals and strategies for the region, and then projects that are seeking funding will come to the SEDS, seeking vital project status. And the vital project status is something that can open doors to federal funding for these projects. So we're excited to get that into place, and that was a true regional effort, and something I was proud to be a part of. Next. Joe?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Did we skip the budget line? Can you back up a little bit? There it is. Yeah, I just meant to say, quickly about the budget, there is a modest increase in taxes this year. This is a plot of the expenditures of the town for the last six years. In the blue line below, the red line above is an inflation, a 2% inflation, which is what inflation has been. As you can see, we have really held the line on taxes and are just barely getting back to what a regular inflation adjustment would have us at. So this year's modest tax increase goes almost entirely to roads. We felt like we needed to put some more effort into that. In particular, as you saw, last year, mud season was horrendous. We were lucky that we had, we were in a position to get a number of federal state grants to initiate some fairly major construction projects on the road, all had to do with drainage, I believe, and fix the worst spots that fell apart last year. This year, we felt we're unlikely to get as lucky on grants, so, excuse me, so we did increase spending on roads, in particular, the Class III Roads Fund was increased from $45,000 to $100,000. So we would be in a position to undertake major projects should that kind of thing happen again. The shape of the weather right now is not looking like that kind of major melt on frozen ground is going to happen again. Instead, we're going to have four months of mud season, it would seem. So that is having its own cost, but we're dealing with it. Okay, Joe, let's go back. So as we look ahead to the next year, we're looking at Coal Hall access and grounds. The access in Coal Hall is not what it should be. We have a handicap elevator, but it's poorly placed, back in a closet behind the Town Clerk's office. We would like the front entrance to be more inviting, we're kicking around ideas of making the front entrance of Coal Hall the main entrance again, at least to the second floor. There's some work that would need to be done to make that happen, and the parking lot staircase to the second floor is really an eyesore, and it's, something's got to be done about it, and we're looking at ideas to fix that up. We'll also be removing the old garage and taking a look at the whole Coal Hall complex as a unit and seeing how we can turn that into something that is a source of pride and possibly even a source of meeting and gathering for the town, which we could really use. An item that's going to be on our agenda for a long time is the water main replacement. Our current water mains, concrete asbestos water mains are at end of life. They were installed in 1940, they have a projected life of 75 years, so we are at the end of that life. There is no indication that there's anything wrong with the pipes, they're all working, we haven't had any leaks to speak of, but it's not something that we can put off until we have a problem. So we'll begin, in the next few years, replacing those in stages. It's going to be a multi-year, multi-decade effort. What we're going to do to try to minimize the impact on the ratepayers is take on new debt to replace the water mains when current debt is retired. So that will be happening over a period of 20 or 30 years. And the preliminary engineering study for that work is currently underway. So that's the basic report, going on to what you will see on the ballot tomorrow. First up is the asking if shall the town of Shasbury enter into a Communication Union District to be known as the Southern Vermont Communication Union District. We urge you to vote yes on this. This is a, something that came out of last sessions, last legislative session's broadband bill. The creation of Communication Union Districts is encouraged as a way for local communities to figure out their rural broadband problems on their own, essentially. This is our best hope for solving this problem. And we have 12 towns that are currently voting to join the Communication Union District. Arlington, Bennington, Dorset, Land Grove, Manchester is in bold because they voted in favor of it, yes, Saturday, at their town meeting, Pownell, Peru, Rupert, Sandgate, Shasbury, Sunderland, and Woodford. Key things to note there is that joining the CUD will not raise your taxes, it is prohibited by state law for local tax money to be used for communications infrastructure. This will be done by the Communication Union District, it'll be run by a governing board, each town will appoint a representative and an alternate to the governing board, they will figure out financing, and that will largely be done through grants, loans, possibly donations, but mainly the people who buy the internet service will pay for the build-out. So it's not going to raise your taxes. And I know there are some other people, where's Tom?
Right here.
I know some other people that wanted to speak to this, should we do that now, do you think, or wait until I get all the way to the floor? Yeah, there were a couple of people that told me they wanted to speak to this, would you like to do that now? I know Bill is one.
Could you come up to the microphone?
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bill Fisk, I'm a resident of Shasbury, I'm
I live on the corner of Wake Creek Road and Roland Road. And I'd like to recommend that the voters of Shasbury approve this ballot item. And my reasons for saying so are such that I live in an area of Shasbury that's not well-served. Our broadband is limited to what's known as a DSL line through the phone company. The speed at which the information is delivered to us is less than three megabytes per second. I believe Comcast delivers at 25 megabytes per second, which is the Federal Communications Commission's definition of minimum service. And ideally, we should be looking at 100 megabytes per second of service. But where I live, for example, I cannot participate in webinars from a professional license. I may have to go somewhere to get that information. It's just not available to me. Nor can I run any sort of a conference online because there just isn't enough bandwidth, the amount of information that pass through the internet every second. So, that's a detriment to me from where I live. I'm limited in what I can stream. Sometimes I can stream, sometimes I can't. There's an article in the Banner a few weeks ago about someone who lived over on Harrington Road and Bennington and had the same problem I had. We're limited to what Consolidated provides and it's a very slow communication speed. I believe, in my heart of hearts, I believe that having improved communications throughput, speed of the internet in a community will help those individuals who are seeking to relocate to town like Shasbury. I understand from talking to a fellow lawyer who works in, and happens to work in Manchester, that one of the first questions people ask when they're looking at real estate is, one, how are the schools? And then, secondly, what's the broadband situation here? And it's a real incentive or disincentive to purchase a particular property. The good news, and from my perspective on this, is the town's not being asked to put a nickel into this, that it will all be done by creating a market that will attract service providers. Hopefully, if there's enough of us that want this service and they are willing to, we're willing to buy the service, the service will be built and paid for out of what we pay for fees. So, that's not a cost to the town. The town's prohibited by laws, as Tim mentioned earlier, from spending any funds on this. So, I think it's basically a question of helping those of us who live in part of Shasbury, I hate to say disadvantaged part of Shasbury, but there aren't any parts of Shasbury that's truly disadvantaged, but will help us to have decent broadband like approximately 30% of the other cities of Shasbury have. So, I'm just asking everyone to vote yes for this particular measure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm John Burris. I live in Green Hill, which is just off Spider Mill Road. And I'm a physician, so I'd like to be able to get into my office records from home at times, and the system is very slow. I'm relying on satellite dish right now. But it's small enough that it's very frustrating to use, and I try to avoid its use at all costs. And I drive into work more often to compensate for that, which is not a long ride, it's six and a half miles to get to the office. It's just so much more efficient for me to work here and to work from the house. So, I also am a big fan of this proposal and hoping it can work someday.
And without objection from the moderator, I'd be happy to entertain any questions if anyone has about the Communication Union District.
So, why would a company go the last mile when they won't do it now? If you formed this group, what's the incentive for the company to provide this service we don't have? Because there's people already that want it.
Yeah, that's a good question. There are a few things that we think will attract them. One is that it is a large piece of business as a chunk as opposed to individual towns. So, there is an economy of scale that allows them to look at a region as a network as opposed to just people, you know, at the end of Roland Road, you don't have it. That's one. The second is, we hope to get grants, federal state grants, that will help pay for the build-out so they would be able to use that money to reduce their cost to do it. Another one is that the CUD would have access to the municipal bond bank, so we could get loans at a better interest rate. Then ISPs can get a commercial bank, which would help that build-out. And there are other financing plans that people have talked about where a community like this would build a fee into the service that people would buy. There would be, say, a $15 a month extra fee that goes toward the construction that the people who sign up for the service would pay to build it, which people might be willing to pay because they're doing it to help, you know, serve their neighbors in a Communication Union District where they might not be willing to pay that fee to Comcast or Consolidated. So, those things help create a piece of business that is attractive. And I will tell you that since I've been, my name's been associated with this effort, I have been contacted by more than one internet service provider looking to talk to me and explain how they could help make this build happen. So, apparently, that combination of things does add up to something that's attractive.
Carl?
So, if we join this consortium, does that mean that all the towns are in agreement that the company cannot come in and say, okay, we want to provide market? Manchester alone? But Manchester will then say, no, you'll have to provide it to all the others in this consortium? So, that it's like a union that cannot be broken apart? And only solicited and awarded as a group?
Essentially, yes. Those decisions about how the network is built and the order that service is provided and to whom it's provided would be decisions made by the governing board with representatives from each town. We are all looking at the model of when this has been done before. This has been done before by the first CUD, which was EC Fiber in East Central Vermont, around Woodstock, towns around that area. And they have made this work. And they are a group of 27 towns. They are providing fiber internet access to the home in rural areas with low densities of mine. And they have built into their governing bylaws things like net neutrality and we will serve underserved areas before we provide better service to the high-density areas, that's what we mean. So, yeah, it would be communal decision-making as to how it exactly got built out. In the back.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. Come up to the microphone. Sorry to be a pain about it, but we're live, right?
We are live.
On Can TV?
Yep, and on Facebook.
And on Facebook. So, it's real important that...
So, correct me if I'm wrong. Is it true that we gave us this pie in the sky option before and we ended up with at best three megabytes DSL?
Yes, we have failed in the past. That's why we're still attaching this problem. Back in the 2013, 2015 timeframe, federal money and state money was provided on the order of $150 million worth. A lot of that money went to VTEL. A lot of that money got spent, apparently, in ways that satisfied some legal contract because VTEL seems to have gotten away with it and without seeing a whole lot of better service in rural areas. Why that happened exactly, I couldn't tell you, but I know it happened, and we're not happy about it. So, here we are, still trying to solve this problem of lack of rural internet access. Okay, good. We can go on to the other ballot question. And this one is just a procedural question. Shall the town of Shasbury create a cemetery capital improvement fund and transfer all the monies from the cemetery reserve fund to the cemetery capital improvement reserve fund? And this is just to fix a procedural area. We've had this fund. There were some procedural areas. When it was created, we haven't been able to access that funds, so it's been dormant for a while. This is the procedural fix to create a new fund, move the money in, and then we'll be able to access it again. I believe, I think. Takes it back to Tom?
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Get shorter here.
I like that.
Did you, did you, did you warn him? You started with the warning. This is from the warning.
Okay. But the reading?
Oh, no, I did not. So, we're ready now to begin the business portion of the meeting. And to begin the business portion, we would normally read the warning. I stand up here and read the warning, which is on page 12. It says that you're warned to come here and vote tonight and certain articles, three or four articles, as well as vote tomorrow. Usually, I entertain a motion to dispense with the reading. Motion's made. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see. As I want to repeat, it's important that you use the microphone because if you notice that you're watching any meetings from the other towns and somebody stands up, you can barely hear them. You know they're talking, but you can't hear what they're saying. Takes a minute or two to walk up, 15, 20 seconds, we'll wait. There are some procedural things that I want to cover. I will state the article. That becomes the main motion. I'll ask for a motion. I'll ask for a second. So, that may, that article will be what's on the floor to then be discussed, debated. You can ask questions about it, so on and so forth. You can amend it by simply saying that you wish to amend it and say what you want. We would need a second to that amendment. Talk about it, discuss it, so on and so forth. You can amend that amendment once. Once is a second. We can talk about that, and so on and so forth. When we vote, we vote backwards. We would vote that amendment to the amendment. Then, we would vote the amendment, and then we would vote the main motion, which would either end up being amended or not amended. There's a couple of motions. If you want to cease debate, if you want to move on, you can call a question. That is an undebatable motion, and it requires a second and a two-thirds majority. If you want a paper ballot, seven voters can stand and request a paper ballot. The debating, this is a rule. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. You're not supposed to speak more than two times and not until everybody has had an opportunity to speak. We can't reconsider any motions unless we have a majority. A motion has to be made by one of the original. That's always something that, my state statute, they talk about it all the time, and I'll get it to come up. But if you do want to, if we do move on to the meeting and you want to come back to something, feel free to say so. That would be a motion reconsider, and I would take it through how you need to do that. Okay. Before I do anything, before I get to our first article, everybody's hand up? Did this to you last year? Awkward. Say hello to whoever's next to you. Introduce yourself.
Thank you. Representative. I'm here. 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 We still have it there.
Okay, are you ready to get going again? Funny how things are. I just got told I had to stay behind the microphone, too. I wasn't even following my own rules. Okay, the first article is to hear the reports of the town officers and take action thereon. Typically, the reports are presented in our town report. This isn't something that requires any formal action. It's a time where if there are corrections, some errors that would want to be pointed out, be corrected, something like that, or if you have any particular questions with regard to any of the reports. Only put tax collector, that kind of stuff.
Mr. Moderator, I do it to be dispensed with the reading of the reports and move on.
Is that okay, everybody?
Second.
Okay. Article two. Shall the town authorize collection of taxes on real or personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand on and for Friday, November 6, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. or likewise postmarked, no later than Friday, November 6, 2020? Identify the motion? Motion's been made. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion, concerns, questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor of authorizing the collection of taxes on real or personal property by the treasurer, which are due in hand on and for Friday, November 6, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. or likewise postmarked, no later than Friday, November 6, 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have. Article three. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $2,148,247 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2021? The amount of such sums to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and revert reserve funds. Identify the motion? Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. You can ask questions and so on and so forth. This is about the budget, which I believe begins on page 20, and it runs to page 33. What we're voting on today, or tonight, doesn't include the community appropriations, which are also on page 33. That's something that gets voted on tomorrow by ballot. Any questions about the budget, comments? Karen? Please come up to the microphone.
I have just a few questions. The first one is, what is the tax impact of your proposed budget? I can't find it in here.
Yeah, that is actually determined at a later point. But I believe, I believe that we decided it was two, two and a half cent increase.
It would be addition, when we increase the class 3 road fund, it is about two, two and a half cents.
Okay. Two and a half. The other question I had concerns the transfer station. Are we, I have heard that we were planning to put the swap shed back in. I've had a lot of people asking me, you know, are we going to have the swap shed again? I was around when we were required to put the swap shed in. It was a really good thing. And I know there were some issues with monitoring it, but I'm just wondering if that's in the plan. And I also have heard a rumor that the cost per big is going up. So, just because we have the public hearing... So just because we have the public hearing, I'd like to know it now rather than get caught in the summer that all of a sudden we have a rate increase that people don't know about.
Yes, uh, there's, it's more than a rumor. The select board passed a motion to raise the cost of trash from one dollar, one dollar to two dollars. Uh, the trash fee has not been raised in some fourteen odd years. It's, uh, lower than any of the surrounding towns are charging. Uh, we have always meant to subsidize the trash service, uh, but the amount of that subsidy has just gotten to be so large that we felt we had to increase it. Uh, this will cover, um, some of that. We will still be subsidizing the, the trash service after that happens. Uh, it's, sounds like a big increase from one dollar, two dollars. Uh, it, we just didn't feel like it was practical to, to handle coin change at the transfer station. So we felt like that was, that was what was needed. Uh, relative to the swap shed, yes, we have had a lot of, um, people saying they would like to get the swap shed back. We would like to get the swap shed back. We actually got as far as, um, getting bids on building a swap shed, which, uh, we have in hand, and we, then we started to have another thought, and I'll share that with you now. And we'll be debating it, uh, as a select board next week. It's full board hasn't, uh, debated this yet. But, uh, what we're looking at is when, uh, in a year, in twenty twenty-one, um, our contract with TAM will expire. TAM you probably know is bought by Casella. We are, um, currently technically being, uh, serviced by Casella. TAM is a division of Casella, but at that time, uh, TAM will go away, our service contract that we currently have will go away. We'll renegotiate. We're looking at several options there in renegotiation, and one of them that we have to look at is how Casella runs all of its other operations, which is run with Casella people. We're the only one around where we have our own employee at the site with Casella garbage equip, with Casella garbage equipment collecting the trash. So, uh, we started to wonder if Casella is going to be open to having a swap shed at a facility that they run, if that's the way they require us to do it. So, yes, we would like to get the swap shed back. We've, we've got really close to actually buying and building one, and now we, we've, another wrench has been thrown to the work. So we're going to be talking about that at our next meeting. And the real question is, do we build a shed that we only get to use for a year? If we renegotiate a contract with Casella and they say, no, you're not running a swap shed here? So, that's where that stands.
Eric, you want to come to the microphone?
Um, how about having the swap shed somewhere other than the, the second, like, vehicle home? Where the current location is?
Um, that's certainly a possibility. It's, I doubt it's as convenient. Well, the sound of Johannesburg, how many people would be amenable to a swap shed at a place other than the transfer station? How many people only wanted to accept the transfer station? Okay, so, it looks like that might be a possibility. We will consider that. And that's going to be, um, that's, uh, on the agenda for the next select board meeting, which is next Monday or two Mondays?
Two, two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today, okay.
Tony, you just brought up a good point about that.
One of the issues, and a glaring issue, is that the swap set shed had turned into a dump. Uh, people were just dropping things off that they didn't want to pay for. Uh, as soon as Shelley turned her back, there would be, uh, a dirty microwave. Uh, or, uh, a bicycle with one wheel, uh, or other kinds of things. So it was a constant chore just keeping that clean. One of the things we talked about was it only being books, uh, so that would keep out the junk. Um, so I think that's still open for debate. I'm very concerned about it being off-site, uh, out of sight from any kind of supervision, much like the clothes dump that, uh, Goodwill has turned into. So I, I would caution you about that. Uh, so far we're still debating, and the Casella, um, company has thrown a wrench into that idea. But I totally sympathize with you because books are great. I mean, I call it the Shakespeare library. Um, and it's wonderful, so, uh, keep that in mind.
Yes, sir. Want to come to the microphone?
What happens if Casella says, you have to go to Bennington. You have to go to Sunderland and just close it down completely. I've heard that's a possibility. They can just say, no, it's not big enough, or whatever, go to Bennington.
That's where the negotiation. You're asking me what would happen if that happened? I presume, uh, that's what we'd have to do, but we'd hope we could negotiate something with them. But it, that is a danger when you're dealing with a monopoly. That's the situation in trash hall these days. It's a, it's a monopoly.
Jim, Jim, you want to come up to the microphone?
Before we leave the swap shed, um, I just want to put in the words of Shelley and Greg.
Yes.
Uh, we had some horrible weather. Lots of mud, cold, windy, and, um, I know they have a little shed there, but when you go in there now, there's a little space here. There's a tiny microwave, and then there's boxes and boxes of books all around. And Greg kind of like sits here, and Shelley kind of like sits here. And they're wonderful people, and if you're going to have them there during cold weather and during summer when it's buggy and hot, I think you've got to have a different, a nice place for them to be. I mean, the, you know, I never thought I'd look forward to going to recycling, but going there a couple of times a week is, is kind of nice. They always have a pleasant, um, you know, if you have a dog, they're out there. You know, feeding the dog, and, uh, also, I want to put in a word for Jack, the member of Corden. He puts a new chair too. So, I assume you're thinking about those things as well?
Yes, yes, that's a good point. And, and the bids that we just got for the swap shed is also a bid for a new shed for Shelley. That one we definitely will build, and that will probably happen in the next month because, uh, she, uh, the person who put in the low bid, uh, has got some opening right now. So yes, we're definitely going to get Shelley a better, um, building.
Yes?
I'm Eddie Tony. I live in Harvest Hills. I have a question on the budget on page twenty. Uh, can someone explain the delinquent tax revenue to me? Because every year we give a report showing how much was collected in delinquent taxes, and, uh, it's a significant number, but on this line it says delinquent tax revenue, it zeros all the way across. How is the, how is the delinquent tax money collected and shown within these financial reports?
David, can you help me out there? Did we move that or, uh?
It's been, it's been moved for some years now. It's, uh, I don't know if Melanie wants to jump in on this, but that's been moved for several years now. The interest is shown here as revenue to the town. The, uh, the delinquent taxes themselves shows tax revenue. We don't show this separate line anymore.
So the delinquent is showing within the current receipts?
Yeah, yeah. That's the way the accountant wanted it done now. Uh, I try to go back to the element, and, yes, correct. That's why it only, the interest is a line now. Since we hired an outside auditor to, uh, help us put things in the proper areas, that was one of the things that moved down.
Oh, okay, so it's just merged together?
It's just merged, yes, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Sue Andrews. I'm a volunteer at the I would like to have somebody speak to the increase in wages for the town administrator. Um, I've just retired from the nonprofit sector, and I, all I can say is I wish we had been able to give our staff the kinds of increases that have been given over the last, it looks like, three or four years. So is it a wage adjustment? Is it a merit wage, wage raise? Um, just tell us a little bit more about it.
Yeah, I can, uh, speak to that. I think other members of the select board will too, and that is, um, that, uh, Dave Administrator is an outstanding town administrator. Uh, when he was hired, he was earning a wage well below what was average for town administrators in towns our size. It took several years to get him up to average, which we get incrementally just to, um, save the immediate impact on the taxpayer. And since then, he has been earning merit increases that you have seen. Uh, I can tell you that Dave, I would say, probably saves this town a thousand bucks every day in his attention to detail, the, the meticulousness with which he does things, and his overall, uh, knowledge base. Every time I think of something that we ought to do or that would be a good thing to look into, I go to Dave. He's already looked into. I just pulls out a piece of paper and shows me the numbers. So, yeah, he has been getting increases. Uh, like I say, he was below average for a long time. He really feels strongly he's above average, and he earns that every single day.
Questions, concerns, comments on the budget? Are you all ready to vote on it? All those in favor of passing the budget proposed by the select board as stated in, on pages twelve through thirty-three of our town report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have. It's over. Okay, now the best part. To transact any other non-binding business as legally may come before said meeting at this time. Uh, we can't take any binding action, uh, but, uh, you can make advisory motions, so on and so forth. And I want to start out to get something out of the way. Uh, there's a young lady from Park McCullough who wanted to say something. Could you come up to the microphone, please? disregard one of the articles tomorrow.
Hello, good evening. Um, I'm Jenny Rosicky. I'm the director at the John G McCullough Library in North Edmonton. Um, thank you so much for, uh, your permission to speak here at the thing. Yeah, thank you. Well, it's good to see so many, uh, to see so many, uh, friends and supporters here this evening. Um, and if I don't know you yet, uh, come and find me after the meeting. I have, um, a sign-up sheet for the library's monthly e-newsletter, so you can find out what's going on. And, uh, card sign-up, account sign-up, up forms. They're really simple and easy to get people out this evening, uh, bring home with your kids, bring them back to the library when they're open. Um, we welcome all of you to come and enjoy everything the library has to offer. Um, some interesting napkin math this evening. The, the appropriations increase that we're requesting this year equals out to six dollars and ninety-seven cents per person per year. That's two cents a day. Um, if you come and use the library even once in the year ahead, it kind of pays for itself, so. Um, and it was interesting watching the, uh, S O U T, um, C U D proposition as well. Um, someone once said, the internet can bring you a million results, but a librarian can get you to the right one. So, we're not, we're here for that as well. Um, information literacy is just part of what we do. Um, but I'd like to thank you on behalf of the library for your continuing support. Um, and we know that we have a choice about this. Um, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve you all. Um, your increased, the increased support over the past few years has helped ensure the, the library's continued existence and service. Um, and its mission is satisfying your literary, cultural, and information needs. Um, so we're, we're here for you. Um, I warmly encourage you to open an account, um, to access the benefits of membership, uh, the whole world of books, DVDs, audiobooks, museum passes, online courses, ebooks, uh, e-audiobooks, uh, research databases, research assistance, uh, and more. And also our community events are free and open to all as well. Um, and I guess to end on like the happiest note, I recently did my annual report for the Department of Libraries. It's kind of an requirement. And, uh, we had, we've had, well, this is all, it's something that you should be proud of. There's been a fifty-three percent increase in collection used from the McCullough Library over the past four years. Um, and that's, that's not folks on staff, that's you. And that's, that's folks using the library. So good on you for doing that. Um, and, you know, again, thank you. We can't do what we do without your help. Um, and we look forward to, you know, my, my colleagues and I look forward to serving you and your family in the year ahead. So thank you.
That's pretty neat, this state agent. You know, we're all on the internet, our phones and in our offices and all that stuff. You can actually still go into that library, card catalogs, they got consumer, but they've got books and comfortable spots. It's quiet and so on and so forth. Still pretty neat to do. Um, other business, anything else? Lon?
So this is a different topic. Um, in my travels to my father-in-law's house, I noticed, um, a, a large landfill somewhere on Route Two headed towards four ninety-five in Massachusetts. And that's been capped for a long time, but they're now using it for, um, solar, for roof net metering. And, uh, our cap landfill would provide a space equivalent to the space of the Buck Hill project. Maybe not configured in the same way, but it seems if the town were thinking about splits to modernizing the heating system in Cole Hall and then, um, becoming a landlord for a community that metering solar project, it may be a way of introducing, uh, more efficient heating and cooling, which Cole Hall has not had, as I recall, um, more efficiently. I don't know if the state would permit it, but I think since we're seeing other states using that space, uh, now for electric generation, it might be something the select board's interested in looking into.
Just one comment. Uh, we have not been pursuing that. We were approached a few years ago a couple of times by companies that wanted to put solar cells on the landfill cap. At that time, they, companies had not done it yet. They were proposing to do it. Um, we considered it. Uh, there were risks, uh, when you put pads on the cap landfill, of course, if you damage the, that cap, could be a very expensive proposition. Uh, that risk was not outweighed by the, uh, at least the financial part of the deal they were offering, which was a fairly modest, I believe, five percent reduction in electric rate. So, well, we didn't think it was worth the risk at that time, but we're certainly open, open. So, well, we didn't think it was worth the risk at that time, but we're certainly open, open to hearing other proposals from other companies, and especially if somebody's actually done it and managed to do a saving. That was the other thing, yes, it was a 25-year deal. So, it was a really long-term commitment.
Yes, do you want to come up to the microphone? Please.
I am here to speak on behalf of Project Against Violent Encounters. My name is Darren Zink, and I am a former employee and a current board member of Project Against Violent Encounters, otherwise known commonly as P in our community. I am here on behalf of our new executive director, Nadia Lukin, and she has asked me to share a letter that she has written with you. Dear Shasberry voters, P is committed to providing compassionate support, practical services, and the pathway to healing and safety for countless victims of domestic violence and sexual assault throughout Bennington County. Our organization has grown from a crisis hotline to the multiple and comprehensive support services we now provide. These services include a 24-hour hotline, court and social service advocacy, case management, emergency financial assistance, access to legal services, access to emergency housing, supervised visitation, parenting classes, community awareness, school-based prevention education, and more. The hotline is where our services often begin, and our volunteers remain the backbone of the support we offer. In the past year, we have provided 32 Shasberry residents with comprehensive services, seven initially contacting us through the emergency hotline. These are your neighbors, these are your friends. These residents received advocacy services including emotional support, safety planning, housing services, civil and legal advocacy, and emergency financial support. In addition, five families and six children received supervised visitation services through our Family Time Center. Domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness among families. Our emergency shelter program provides families with short-term housing and case management services with the goal of obtaining safe and permanent housing. In the past year, we provided 89 adults and 58 children with 3,745 nights of shelter services. To stop the generational cycle of abuse, we must start early and invest in prevention strategies that provide healthy parent-child relationships, friendships, and dating relationships. Through our education and empowerment programs, pre-kindergarten to college, nurturing parenting classes, women's support groups, healthy mind, body, and family workshops, and financial literacy programs, we help over 3,500 children and teachers and other adults learn new skills and techniques. On behalf of the board of directors, staff, and families served, I thank the residents of Shasberry for your ongoing support to P. Your support creates greater opportunities for the people impacted by domestic and/or sexual violence who need our services each year. Respectfully, Nadia Lukin, Executive Director. Thank you.
Underwood and Business? Yes, sir.
Can I come up here?
Sure.
What have you got? For appropriations for tomorrow?
For who?
For GDEX in Bennington.
Uh, Bennington Free Clinic.
Yep, there you go.
Hi, I'm Scott Rizlo, that's too loud. I'm a resident of Shasberry on Cross Road, I'm also the new director of the Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services, following Sue Andrews, who recently retired in January. And I'd like to ask you all to vote for the $1,000 appropriation for the Bennington Free Clinic that's on the ballot for tomorrow. GDEX, in addition to the Bennington Free Clinic, has, runs the food and fuel fund, providing direct assistance for heating and housing. We also run the kitchen cover food program. The people that benefited from the kitchen covered in 2019 include 84 residents of Shasberry. And the Bennington Free Clinic, since 2009, has provided primary care for thousands of uninsured and underinsured adults, and also helped many of them get onto insurance. I will add that in spite of our economic growth and low unemployment, we still have neighbors in need who are not served by our Patchwork Safety Net. So, I urge everyone to vote for tomorrow's appropriation. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Chamber Poling, I am a resident of Shasberry, relatively new, about a year. I work at Rock Community Action, who is also on the ballot, but I'm not here representing them. I serve on the board of Sunrise Family Resource Center, and I'm going to ask to speak on my behalf for the appropriation, for your vote, your support tomorrow. 65 families were assisted by Sunrise Family Resource Center, 65 families from Shasberry. That's about 4% of the total families that are served by Sunrise Family Resource Center. This 25 families received childcare financial assistance. We know how important just childcare can be. And also, 18 other families, resources and referrals for childcare. So, that's a lot of what Shasberry families, how Shasberry families have benefited from the services at Sunrise. Also, other educational things for children, intensive crisis intervention and support and households have also, homeless households have also benefited from the supportive family housing program at Sunrise. Much of the budget for Sunrise does come from federal and state grants, but the money that comes from communities and individual donors is very important. We need it not only for our budget, but it's also a vote of support, a vote of recognition that early childhood intervention and services, they're the responsibility of us all. So, I ask you to support Sunrise and your vote tomorrow.
This is your opportunity to make statements, ask the select board about some things. We've heard from the different providers, we heard a suggestion about maybe doing something with our landfill that could be beneficial to the town, so on and so forth, new concepts? Yes?
Would I speak on behalf of WBDN?
Come on up.
Come on. All the way or just here?
Why don't you come all the way, so that everybody can get a good look at you? Oh, that comes down.
Howdy, I'm Mike Loewy, I've been in Shasberry for a good many years, and grew up listening to WBDN, Janet Pate, and all those people. We're working hard to keep it going, but through the support of Shasberry last year, it helped us quite, quite a lot to get through the year. And we even put up a new sign here about a month or so ago, have you ever noticed it? "Voice of Southern Vermont." And we're working at it, we're going to keep it going as long as we can. And remember, nobody gets paid a penny there. I, me and my granddaughter moved along there all last summer, and nobody gets paid a dime. We just keep the radio station going for all the towns around. So, we appreciate your support tomorrow. Thank you.
Just add to what he just said, if anyone wants to do a show?
Come on up, this is more, come to the microphone.
Give us a minute.
This is more, go ahead.
Yeah, if anyone wants to do a show, come on down. Anything you want to do, sports, politics, your profession, your hobbies, your passion, come on down. I do one, I don't think anyone listens, and I'm walking in the store, I'm signing a word. I've heard that voice before. That people are listening even though they don't call in. Anything you want to do, anything, go down there, get on your soapbox and do it. And you get paid just like everyone else does, nothing.
Alice, I just have to say, I am just delighted that Scott Rizlo is now in charge of the Intervet Community and the State November, Sue Andrews. But I have to say, that Sue Andrews has done the most magnificent job, the doctor does, the show, and Jenny Zink's great play, and I think we should be proud of her.
Before I hear from anybody else, once we do adjourn, there's coffee, there's cake, cookies, things like that, dessert and such things. So, what else do you have?
Good evening. My name is Richard Sussar, I live on the White Creek Road in Shasberry, I've lived there for over 30 years, on and off through military service and stuff. I have around 16 and a half years of military service, several years of law enforcement, service to, in Bennington Police Department, Bennington County Sheriff's Department. I'm here today to ask the voters of Shasberry, the board, to consider a non-binding resolution to have Shasberry as a Second Amendment sanctuary county. And I would like to, if anybody could put on that, I would just like to see if it would all be on that.
Did you all hear, I'll take that as a motion, it's non-binding. Could you repeat what, come up here, please? So, they said, maybe it will ease you, I would just say.
I've got a whole spiel here I was going to read, I'm going to save you this hand of that. This is what I'm asking is, that I see a move throughout Vermont for sanctuary cities for a Second Amendment. Basically, the Second Amendment's not about hunting, Vermont's about hunting and stuff, but the Second Amendment isn't about hunting. It gives people like myself, my son, my grandchildren, and other people who are proficient with weapons and guns to continue to be able to protect their families if they need to be. It's not a binding resolution, it doesn't say that everybody has to have a gun, anything like that, it's just allowing those of us who do use them and who do carry them to be able to keep doing so, and protect us possibly from things happening in the state with the gun laws and stuff. And that's all we're asking, there's quite a movement in the state.
What kind of guns?
Handguns.
Just handguns?
Rifles.
Assault rifles?
Shot them, what do you consider assault?
Assault rifles?
What do you consider assault rifle?
Pull the trigger, it goes bang really quick.
No, pull the trigger, you get one shot.
Okay, you pull it again, and you-
You get one shot.
You go automatic, I'm going to bunge you to your gun.
Illegal, that's illegal.
But a assault weapon has selected fire. That's the difference.
The difference between automatic and semi-automatic, just because of the stock on the gun doesn't make it assault.
Lon, you have some thoughts?
So, as I understand it, you, you want to be able to protect your right to carry guns by taking guns up to the legislature to defend your right to carry guns? I mean, you said you want to have your gun, so you make sure nothing happens to your right to carry guns. So, is this a subtle way of trying to intimidate people or trying to protect us?
No, not at all.
Because I don't feel particularly safe going to the grocery store with a bunch of people packing weapons. It doesn't create a sense of security, it creates a sense of fear and insecurity.
Do you see a lot of people carrying?
Yes.
I carry mine concealed.
When you open your coat, I can see guns in Hannafords or Price Chopper. People aren't very subtle about it.
No, I'm subtle.
I've never seen a gun in Hannaford or Price Chopper.
These.
I've never seen.
Yes.
I've got this thing here, are you advocating that the right to have a gun also includes a test to admit, to how to operate it, and also to have a license to that? So, it becomes a right and not a privilege?
I have no problem with that, my grandson, seven-year-old, passed on a safety course.
I'm not interested in what your grandson does, are you suggesting that we have a license to carry a gun, to have a gun?
No.
Not to operate one?
No.
So, the question, he's asking, you're outside of the mic, so let me, let me just repeat what you're saying. Your question is whether or not his point would be that there has to be training and licensing for the use of the weapon?
Yes.
No, I'm not advocating for that. I believe that our rights to protect are under Second Amendment for us to have guns.
Yes, I agree with the gentleman earlier.
Is there was somebody else, yes?
I'm Scott again, and I'll make it clear, I'm speaking on behalf of myself as an individual, I'm a resident of Shasberry, not my job or any organization. I just have one question. I think I heard you say, you were speaking in support of protecting your rights and protecting yourself, and I think your family and others. My question for you is, from whom do you feel you need protection that is served by our law enforcement? Thank you.
Look at the average, the average wait time for a police officer to respond to a resident in Shasberry, Shasberry Hollow, any place like that. If I got somebody kicking at my door, wanting to come in, and it's happened in the Bennington area, it's happened in the Roebden, around there quite often. And I want to be able to protect my family. If I'm inside my home, and I have a firearm, that person lives, they'll make entry in my home.
Currently, our, currently state law allows us to carry without license?
Correct.
Okay. And what you're asserting, or what you're asking is an opinion of the congregation, whether or not we should continue to be able to possess a firearm, carry a firearm without a license? Okay, then I shouldn't have said without license, I don't want to narrow it down to that. So, what you were, you're asking the crowd, or the congregation, to get a sense for how they feel about Second Amendment rights in Vermont?
Correct.
And the state either remaining as it is, or enacting any kind of further restrictions?
Point of order?
Tom, that's not what he asked for.
Okay.
So, the word sanctuary city has a particular meaning?
Yeah.
Which is that we are going to defy the laws about gun restrictions, and that the town of Shasberry is going to endorse a policy where people can carry and use guns out in the open and public. That's what a sanctuary city is. It's a place that vehemently disregards any restriction on gun usage, ownership, or possession.
So, sanctuary city would be something that goes further than our current, the current status that we have in Vermont.
Right, he's not asking you to say how many people currently support current law.
Yep.
He's asking us to endorse a political position about a very special phrase called sanctuary cities that's separate apart from current law. He wants us to go beyond current law, he's actually asking us to repeal current law and any type of gun restrictions. He's actually asking us to repeal current law and any type of gun restriction under the theory that the second amendment protects all types of gun usage, ownership, and possession.
Want to respond to that?
No, I just, very quickly. Yeah, the second amendment does protect our gun rights. It should protect our gun rights. Well, I'm not, whether you like guns or not, I'm not asking you to come on my side and like them, I'm not asking you to not like them. I've been around guns my, most of my life, from young to enough to old. I'm just asking that, you know, you, uh, support a non-binding resolution calling Shastberry a second amendment sanctuary town.
Okay. What's the sense and the feeling for going further with this as far as showing hands, anything like that, more dispensing and moving on?
There's no second question.
Question.
There's no second question.
There's no second.
Yeah, there's nothing, no, there's not. That's what I was trying to do. I'm trying to get, I was trying to get what type of, uh, motion, uh, we'd be asking a second for.
I've got a second. I'm asking for a second to, uh, make this a non-binding resolution, the Shastberry being a second amendment sanctuary town.
There. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded. We've had discussion. Do we have more discussion?
I think this is a very charged issue, and I don't think we are fully informed of the parameters. I'm an owner myself, but I'm not in favor of what I understand this is, but I would like to hear more. So I would like to amend the recommendation that we table this until there is a proper hearing on the matter that we can actually understand what it means by making, supporting this, this suggestion.
Motion to adjourn, table the motion. Second?
Second.
Got a couple of seconds?
Call it.
Questions we call?
Second.
Seconded, not favorable. Um, what we're going to be voting right now is on tabling this motion. All those in favor, if you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. That's what town meeting, community meeting, it's how we govern ourselves. Okay. Some other items. How do you take your coffee?
Uh, I'm Carl Forman, I live up on, down the Clay Road. Uh, the reason that we, this evening had a potluck came out of a discussion with the board that we've not had a decent turnout typically in past years. Um, I think we had more people tonight. I wonder if we could show hands as to whether or not that would be important to have a potluck each evening before town meeting, one hour before before the meeting's ended Sunday. Just note whether or not the town likes that idea.
Showing hands, how many would like to continue to do this one hour before town meeting? Who made, uh, who made the tape that we have out there?
Karen.
Karen, did Karen make it?
Yes.
You're a decorator. I didn't think.
Okay, maturely possible for bringing. What's that?
Mrs. Hannaford made the case.
Oh, yeah. She's not a registered voter, because we, she don't get to.
My name is Ms. Svenik. I live on Harvest, and Harvest Hills are in Mountain Dew Drive. Um, the reason I came up is because I wanted to say that I really appreciate the gentleman coming, expressing an idea that may be different than what the rest of us have said. It's what's called democracy, and I want to thank him for doing it.
Since our schools have consolidated now, we don't have a school meeting here.
Right.
So we have really no idea what's going on through Run to Bennington and Run Back here.
Right.
So in a way, we get our representatives, NAU and the New Elementary Union, to come here to talk to us before annual meeting?
Well, they're at, they're at a meeting, they were at a meeting at six o'clock, six thirty.
That no, none of the outbound towns go to, because we can't get here and get back to our own town meeting. So we really have no input to what's going on in the New Elementary Union District.
That's something that, that, our, I know our select board has been wrestling with, trying to get the timing, because before, when the school meeting was here, it was east, we followed, uh, but not so easy now. I know that our select board's been wrestling with that. Probably something that could be taken up with the, uh, the school board itself, um, you know, to, to see what, what kind of alternatives there could be.
You know, if they were here before the meeting, we could ask them questions, but now it's like, not running down to Bennington and running back here to try to...
Over here. Come up here, come on up.
Uh, I'm Scott McManey, uh, one of the representatives from Shastberry from the , uh, elementary school board. Tony DeNaozrio is the other, right over there. We were at the meeting, it started at seven forty-five.
Six.
Sorry, six forty-five, got here in time to have some lasagna. Um, doesn't, the meeting didn't last very long. Certainly in future years, um, we could, I'm, you know, that meeting typically doesn't last very long. Um, in future years, we could come, be here, have a couple of chairs over here if there's ever any questions. Um, I, I know I would make myself available, I'm sure Tony would as well, for as long as we're on the board.
Super, Scott. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And I think we probably could make time, you know, a little bit of time on the agenda for getting high on it. Alice?
Yeah, Tom, you also have, um, David Durfee, who's a member of the NAU board, and, uh, he could tell us lots about that.
Well, he was up there for two days. You're not three days? I don't need to let you out, no.
I will make myself available.
David says he'd make himself available.
Uh, I know it's intuitively, obviously, obvious to most of the people who look at your tax bill, but the school budget, I'm just following, always come, came up, the school bill is basically three times what our town spends on highways and roads, and we seem to have no input on that other than people that are doing some duty. I don't have a copy of how they're spending their money. I hear, uh, through great minds, that there's a, a class ratio of, uh, twelve to thirteen students per teacher. I don't know what's going on there, and I feel that probably, through here, man in gray hairs generally speaking, would probably like to know how the younger folks are getting treated. So anyway, I suggest that the next meeting, we have somebody come in and do a budget presentation, budget presentation or something along that line.
You folks be willing to entertain something like that, discuss it?
Yes.
Yes. Come on.
I'm Melissa Morrison, a Shastberry resident as well, and, um, I don't have any technical numbers to share with you at all, but as a Shastberry parent who's had, um, students in the school for the last seven years, the changes that I've seen, uh, I'm sure from your tax bill and understanding why twelve to thirteen, fourteen kids in a classroom and the costs that go along with that, I think we'd all need to look very hard at our community and what the challenges the schools are having to, to deal with, with the population of students that are in a classroom. I can personally say, my children, the, um, uh, challenges within the students that are there and what this, um, school does to try to support the multitude of encounters that those children face before they walk through these doors is, is amazing. And so I do, would love for follow-up from our school board members to come, but I think we need to look, um, if you can, deep at what's happening within our community that's causing these changes and these increasing expenses, and I'm not sure that they have enough money to cover what's coming at us. Okay?
So that would seem like a horrible reason to have a second. Yep. We're looking to put you on the hot seat.
Yes. It's, it's worth noting too that, um, on the Southwest Vermont Supervisor Union website, there's a calendar of events, um, all of the meetings are posted there and they are public. I believe the elementary school district meeting is the second Wednesday of each month. I could be, I could be wrong there, it's in my phone, of course not here. Um, but they are public meetings and it's an, it's an opportunity to hear, especially as we lead up to this meeting, this is, the, the, the last few meetings is when we've had most of our meeting budget conversations, um, and certainly that would be where you would glean a lot if you wanted to, to attend, um, for those that might feel a little bit disconnected and, you know, with this new, with this new board, I can understand why people may feel that way. Um, it's been an interesting experience this first year. Um, I, we've gotten a chance to tour, um, in this first year, we've gotten a chance to, to have our meetings and tour each school in the district. Um, we've made it all the way through except Woodford. Woodford's the last, Woodford's the last one. Um, we've held our meetings at each of those schools. It's been, um, interesting and eye-opening to see what other schools in this area are dealing with. Um, we've got a real gem here in Shastberry, that's for sure. Um, but, you know, like Melissa was just saying, um, there's a lot of things that are causing the increases that everybody's seeing to budgets. Um, many of them are, um, not in our control and all we can do is put our best foot forward for, for the kids in this community. Thanks.
I've been a teacher in the dis, I was a teacher.
Come on up, come to my microphone.
Okay. I was a teacher, um, in this district, I taught at Shastberry for five years and at the middle school for close to twenty, and I can't ever remember having a class of less than twenty-three students a year. At the middle school, I had well over a hundred students, so I don't know where it's thirteen or fourteen I've taught.
I'm Mary Gere, and I'm down there in Shastberry. Uh, for any of you who haven't seen it, I would recommend, you know, more global, look at the financial picture for education in the state of Vermont, which you look at Vermont Digger on February twenty-sixth. I think you'll have access to, it gives you a very nice picture of what's happening in the state over so many years and why there are schools that have fewer than twenty-three or forty, whatever number of students there are. In fact, the state is, we have a nice graph in there, so just look it up. Come on, Digger on February twenty-sixth.
Some other comments, some other issues, questions. Many of you don't come to the monthly select board meetings, you come here once a year. Here they are. They're ready to answer whatever questions you've got, concerns. I would entertain a motion to adjourn if that would be, uh, the will of the congregation. Motions made, they're made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Make sure you come to vote tomorrow, seven o'clock at the Firehouse. Eight o'clock?